At five ten. And, um, once again, all council members are present.
With the exception of Mayor Dunbar.
With the exception of Mayor Dunbar, pardon me, Mayor Dunbar.
I have it right here.
And also, we will, um, may I have a, a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
Move adoption of the agenda.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, a move to the election of officers.
Thank you. For this item is the same as the previous two authorities. The bylaws calls for appointment of the chair and vice chair for the housing authority. And historically, the mayor of the council is the chair and the vice mayor is the vice chair. And the secretary executive director is the town manager. So staff is asking that you make those appointments per the bylaws, please.
Do I have a motion?
Could I just ask the staff a question, please?
Sure.
When it says historically, the mayor is chair and the vice mayor is vice chair, is that in the bylaws or is that just how?
It is in the bylaws.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion to approve the election of the officers?
I move the election of the officers as set forth in the staff report and in the bylaws.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now, we will have the approval of the minutes from April nineteenth, twenty sixteen, please.
I move that we approve the minutes of Yountville Housing Authority meeting held April nineteenth, twenty sixteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain due to not attending the meeting.
I just noticed that I haven't been saying aye, but I have been thinking it with the rest of the council. So from now on, I'll remind myself to say aye also. Okay, so we do have a presentation, oh, a public comment. Is there anyone with public comment on this agenda or items on the agenda that are not on the agenda? Then I will move to presentations, and we do have a presentation with the housing, by the Housing Authority of the City of Napa, annual report. Will you please join us?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me here this evening. I came to give you my annual report of the past activities that the Housing Authority has done for the town of Yountville. And I believe we do have my PowerPoint presentation. Great. So first of all, I would like to tell you a little bit about what's been going on with the two housing rehabilitation grants that the town obtained in the fall of two thousand fourteen.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Before you begin, for the record, would you mind reintroducing yourself?
Yes, I am so sorry.
That's quite all right.
Yes, I am Andrea Clark. I work for the Housing Authority for the City of Napa. And we are contracted by the town to administer the town's affordable housing.
Thank you, Andrea.
And so, yes, I did come to tell you about what we've been doing this past year. And as a reminder, the town did obtain and were awarded two grants for housing, what we called the housing rehab program or a homeowner repair program. And you received a little over eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the two thousand and fourteen notice of funding awards. So it took us a little while to get everything into contract, get that program up and running. So I did want to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing with that. So this program provides deferred payment loans to low-income households to help them make the necessary repairs to their home to make them healthy and safe and code compliant. And they, again, this is for low-income households. So for a family of four, that would be about sixty-nine thousand dollars. Under that program, the town can provide for a single-family stick-belt type home. We can provide a loan up to fifty-eight thousand dollars. And if it's a mobile home, we can provide a loan up to thirty thousand dollars. These are at zero percent interest rates, and they are deferred payment loans, anywhere from twenty to thirty years. During that time of the contract, no payments are required on those loans. And the only thing that is required is that these, the properties that you assist remain owner-occupied. They have to remain their primary residence. If they sell the property, they have to pay back the loans. And then the monies would come back to the town, and they would be able to reuse those funds. We can do, I mentioned that we want to make sure that we are doing repairs that can make the home safe and sanitary and code compliant. There is an aspect of that program where they can also have, do some general property improvements, but it cannot be more than ten percent of the loan. So, next slide, please. So to give you an update of what's been going on, we, the town received a grant from what is called the Home Program. And these funds come from Congress to HUD and then to the state of California and then to the town of Yountville. It is a grant that the town received, so it does not have to be paid back. You received five hundred thousand dollars. And we've been able to complete five projects with this, with the funds so far, amounting to seventy-two thousand, six hundred dollars. We have three projects currently in the works for seventy thousand. And then we have another six applicants that we are working with right now. So they all have to be income-eligible. Then we walk through the process to see what type of work the homeowner is requesting and needs. We work with a local contractor for them to bid on the projects. And then our housing specialist walks through that project to make sure everything is being done according to the terms of the contract. The town issues payments directly to the contractor. So we have about, you have about three hundred and forty-five thousand remaining that is uncommitted on the grant. We're anticipating that perhaps these six applicants will use up the most of, the majority of those funds. And we have to have all the funds expended by next November thirty, two thousand seventeen. So we're hopeful, we're on track to have all those funds spent. And then the town received a grant from what is called the Cal Home Program. And that was for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Like, we have completed seven projects totaling a hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars. And we have three projects in the works for that grant totaling thirty-seven, five. We've got about a hundred and sixty-three thousand that's uncommitted, but we have five applicants that we are currently working with. So we're expecting that those funds will be fully expended with those five applicants if they're all income-eligible. This grant expires in September, the end of September. So we've got a lot of work to do to try to hustle up and get all of that money spent, but we are very, very hopeful that that will happen. We've, next slide, please. As far as marketing and outreach, we have myself and our housing specialist, Cheryl Breckie, who is now our supervisor of the program. Her and I have done several presentations out in the community to either church groups or Realtor groups and presenting the town's information on their programs. We've worked with a lot of senior groups. And Cheryl has done homeowner association informational meetings with your local mobile home parks. And so we've been getting the word out there. It's just been a little slower than we had expected. We have sent flyers out to, we've targeted certain neighborhoods and sent flyers out. We've actually done door-to-door handing out the flyers. And Cheryl even went through the mobile home parks and did a lot of door-to-door contact with those also. And then we also did a search of any of the owners that are receiving rental assistance from the Housing Authority, as HUD now requires that any mobile home that they assist have seismic tie-downs or the bracing systems with them. So we did assist several homeowners with that under the rehab program. We just recently hired a new bilingual rehab specialist, Antonio. And he will be, he started just this last week. He is going to start a new round of marketing and outreach and hold some informational meetings in this next couple of months. So Antonio is a licensed contractor, and so he comes to us with a lot of skills. And he's, works, is going to work hand-in-hand with Cheryl. And we've also done a lot of outreach with local contractors to get them involved and have them bid on the different projects. So we're real pleased with kind of response we've been receiving. However, we'd really like to be able to spend that money. It's a little faster for you. We're trying. As far as, the next slide, please. As far as grant administration, we have been contracted by the town to administer that, those grants for you. What that means is that we do all of the intake of applications. We do the income eligibility. We work with the contractors. We prepare all the draw forms and reporting and everything that needs to go back to Housing and Community Development in Sacramento. We then interact with staff here to get those contractors paid and then make sure that the state is reimbursing you for the payments and the loans that you've been making. And then there's also quarterly and annual reporting that is required on those two grants. We prepare those reports and send those off to Housing and Community Development on behalf of the town. We maintain a borrower loan folder. We maintain the project folders. And make sure then that we're doing annual monitoring to make sure that the people are still remaining owners of those properties and living in the property. And then the town is responsible for all the financial and accounting record-keeping. And so, a lot of activity that goes on between us and the town staff, but we are getting all of those reports and things done in a timely manner. Next slide. Yes?
A quick question. You said something that we all remember back when we were talking about it. We didn't know that, but maybe you may realize it. We're not a, you know, we don't have an eligible district or neighborhood census tract. So it's been a long time since we were able to compete competitively for this type of funding, given the nature of the communities that we're, we're very excited. And I would also say that there is a significant need within the community, although it's taken a little bit of time to acknowledge that and work with it. My real question is, you reminded me that these loans in time will get repaid, you know, principally upon the resale when that person moves on or sells the unit. So it really sets us up as not just a one-time grant program, but that we're going to be able to have, you know, in the next several years, there'll be some of this money coming in in smaller increments that we'll be able to put back out into it. Now, so that was the one thing I just wanted to share is that it is an ongoing cycle, although it's the same program requirements in place in the paperwork.
Yeah, yes. So any loan repayments have to go into a special fund that is then reused?
We have a lot of special funds.
Yes, yeah. Yes, separate funds are always a lot to take care of. But it is, then becomes a revolving loan fund and has to be used for the same like activities.
Yeah. A hundred thousand is one key, recirculating all the various times and moving around the details. It's good to know.
And as you then use the funds and want to apply for new funds, your way you have administered your grant and shown that you can spend the funds and then also as long, and how you've submitted your reports, if you've submitted your reports in a timely manner, that's all part of the scoring process. So next year, perhaps then, when there's the notice of funding, you'd want, will be in a position to apply for funds again and just keep, keep the programs going along with the loan repayments. So, you know, it is exciting and there is a need. We just got to, we just got to make the people realize they need our help. So, so again, we're on track. We anticipate that in September and November, we will have the grant funds spent down and put you in a position to be able to apply for funds again next funding cycle. Okay, so the other part of my duties that we do on behalf of the town is we do monitor the for-sale affordable housing units that you have here in town and then also the rental side of the program. So this past year, as far as the, on the sale side, the for-sale units, have responded to a lot of inquiries for people wanting to refinance their first mortgages. So there's been a lot of inquiries about that also. People may be inquiring on what their sale prices would be if they wanted to sell their property. Not anybody pulled the trigger on that because they're, however, we did get a lot of inquiries about refinancing. And then also, part of our duties is to do an annual monitoring to make sure that these homes are staying owner-occupied. We had a few homes that we were a little questioning about. And so we did hire a private investigator to go and look into some of, into those, into those homes that we were questioning. And we did find that one unit was definitely renting his property out. And so, and you have acted upon that. And we assisted with delivering that notice of default, assisted the town in purchasing the property. And January fifth, the town actually did take ownership of that property. And part of some of the other activities we did around acquiring that property is we went in and did a thorough inspection of the property and made sure that the homeowner brought the property back up to sellable condition. It was in pretty rough shape. And so about forty thousand dollars of repairs and cleanup. So the home is in really nice moving condition. And then later on in the agenda, we will be talking about that home. On the rental side, we do the same thing. You know, we make sure that the landlords or property managers are renting the properties to the income that are designated for these affordabilities that are designated to these properties. Or make sure that the rents that they charge are affordable to the different designations. This past year, I've worked a lot with the owners of Girardi Place and Vineyard Oaks. They've had some vacancies, making sure that those owners, property managers, understand then what are the income limitations and the rent limitations on those two properties. And I've been recently informed that the, one of the duplexes, two and four Girardi Place are, is going to be listed for sale. They have identified a buyer. In that transaction, will probably conclude in another month to two months. I have reached out to the listing agent to make sure that they understand that the town's rental restrictions and the regulatory agreement stays on the property. It's there in, into perpetuity and that it does transfer to the new owner. They were aware of that, and he will make sure that the buyer is informed of that. And we also make sure that all of these properties have their insurance and that their taxes are being paid. And so, a lot of activity that goes on during the year. And with that, that concludes my report. Any questions at all?
Great presentation, council. Are there any questions?
I have a couple. Thank you for coming tonight and thank you for your report. Do you have, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, any numbers for our total affordable inventory in town, purchase and rental? And I, yesterday was a holiday, so I sort of zoned out and should have called you earlier. And if not, that's fine. I was just curious. And then the second thing is, I live in Rancho de Napa. So I would like to speak personally and as a council member to say, thank you for your outreach there. Have you mailed out to Rancho in addition to the block walking and in the office?
I don't know that we've actually mailed. We have asked the manager if they could hand them out or put them in mailboxes. And I know that we've asked them to post them around the property and in the clubhouse and those kind of things. And I know they did a lot of canvassing in the neighborhood. So I don't know if we actually did mailings direct to them.
Well, I will be, sometimes the best way to reach is not through the office typically in that neighborhood. I will be happy if you want me to, to put them in our interior mailboxes because our management is not set up to do that.
Oh, okay.
But it is in the office. And I, you know, I know you have helped people in our neighborhood, so thank you. But I would be happy to just tell you, the more ways you can get to our population, the better.
Yes. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Maybe Sandra knows the answer to the units.
I think I know the answer, and it's seventy-two rental units to seventy-eight ownership units.
Thank you.
I should have known that number.
Now we all know it.
Yes.
Are there any other questions of the council? And we'll open it up for public comment. Does anyone in the public have a question for our presenter? Yes, yes.
It's on the town's website through their agenda.
Thank you very much. We so appreciate your, really what you do. It's a great thing that you do for us. Thank you. So seeing that we are finished with the annual report, our next administrative item is actually, has been mentioned and is an important part of that report. So could we have staff report on administrative item nine A?
Good evening. Tonight, you have before you the discussion and possible direction regarding options for disposition of the deed-restricted affordable single-family dwelling at twenty-seven Landy Way. And as you know from Andrea's presentation, the town closed on that property earlier this month, and we are now the owners of that property. We are really intending to hold it temporarily before we dispose of it in some manner. And we are presenting to you several different options tonight. The first of which is our recommendation to you, and that is to sell the, sell the property to a nonprofit housing partner. And by doing so, we're able to retain the unit as an affordable unit for the long term because the housing partner would purchase the property and then put it into the, into their rental portfolio. It would be restricted to a certain category of area median income and would retain a unit that would have otherwise been lost in twenty-thirty when the current resale restriction expired. So to explore the feasibility of this option, staff along with the Housing Authority staff met with Napa Valley Community Housing to present the option to them. And they have expressed a level of interest in doing so. They own other properties in town, and they've proven themselves to be a good partner. They own the Arroyo Grande property, the Mount Street cottages, as well as the Yount Street apartments. And they own and manage those, and they're all held in excellent condition, and they're professionally managed. So in presenting it to the Napa Valley Community Housing, they shared with us four different options in their ability to acquire the unit and make the, the payments on it. And they presented options for eighty, ninety, one hundred and one twenty AMI based on a sixty thousand dollar down payment and a sixty to sixty-five thousand dollar down payment assistance, in which case they would carry the mortgage on the property and rent it to any of those income groups. It penciled out at one hundred percent and one twenty percent AMI. So if you are to give direction to pursue this option, we would recommend that it be part of the resale agreement, that it be a rental unit for a hundred percent AMI or lower. And then I just mentioned that there is sixty to sixty-five thousand in potential, in potential down payment assistance that's needed. And in working with the Housing Authority, they do recommend that it be in the form of a deferred loan. We reached out to County of Napa to see if they held an interest in sharing in the, the cost of that down payment assistance. And they have indicated a willingness and a fund from which the, those monies could come. And so we would pursue further discussions with them if we do this option. So there are some pros and cons in converting this from an ownership unit to a rental unit. And some of the pros are that it adds a two-bedroom house to the affordable rental housing stock in a quite tight market and that it potentially provides a rental to an employee of any one of the town's businesses. It does meet the town's goal of maintaining as many of the housing units as affordable as possible. And the rental unit would be owned and managed by the local housing agency, like I mentioned, that owns other properties in town and has a proven track record in maintaining them. And by doing so, the property would be professionally managed and maintained. Some of the cons would be that we could lose an ownership unit. And as you know from the earlier numbers, we already have more rental units than ownership numbers. And the rental unit would be located in a neighborhood that is mostly owner-occupied, so there may be some pushback. And it would require the town to provide some level of financing for the down payment assistance. But this is our recommendation as a preferred option to you tonight. Another option would be to sell the property to an income-eligible buyer. And one of the challenges in doing so is finding a buyer that would be able to make the ten percent down payment. And for a person at one hundred percent of AMI with less than an eighty thousand dollar income, not all of them have thirty thousand dollars to put down. Although we've learned from the Housing Authority that such persons may have family who's willing to help them with the deposit. And we've also learned from the county that there is the fund for ten percent down payment assistance. If the property is sold to a new affordable buyer, we would have an opportunity to reset the term of the resale restriction for another thirty years. And so, looking at some of the pros and cons of this option, the pros are that the town is able to continue the current program. And then it would provide a home ownership, ownership opportunity to someone in the low or moderate income range who may otherwise be priced out of the market. It allows us to extend the regulatory term for another thirty years. And the down payment assistance is available from County of Napa. And it provides an opportunity to someone who may be renting in town, the chance to live here in town. Some of the cons are that there is limited equity or return on the investment because of that resale restriction, and someone would have to, and that may limit the potential pool of buyers. There's also the possible lack of long-term investment in the property, which may be the result of an owner not having the ability to invest, but also the lack of incentive of putting money into the unit. It may be difficult to find an employee who qualifies and is able to meet the requirements for the down payment and close of escrow. And then simply with this item being before you tonight, we know that there could be abuse of the BMR homeownership opportunity. And, and of course, that's why we have this opportunity to put this affordable unit back out there. The regulatory agreement would, I'm sorry? The regulatory agreement would expire in another thirty years unless the town were to acquire the unit back and then reset that term, and the town may need to provide some sort of down payment assistance.
Another observation I would share, if you've been doing, especially in some of the distinct conditions in some of the whole ownership market, homes, affordable homeownership, and we're finding that a number of them are in a difficult situation. A real concern that we have is that these homes are now twenty, twenty-five years old, and they're going to need certain things like, they're going to need to re-rook and certain things like that. We're somewhat concerned that the economic viability of the applicants, especially with the limited return on the restriction. So it's just something that we're looking at. We've also done some analysis and talking to some of the, and this is more of an anecdotal conversation with employers. What we're finding with our local employers is that they're telling us most of their employees are really much more interested in the rental market than they are buying into a market. So we think that this is a better, long-term, it's a better solution to fixing the neighborhoods, keeping them up, and also having better solution to fixing the neighborhoods, keeping them up, and also having the kind of diversity in the community, the neighborhoods, because it's still the same income level of people nature. It's still those that are in the low market, you know, need to be in a lower income. So it's not changing that, that aspect of it. But we think that, especially with the track record of Napa Valley Community Housing, when we look at property maintenance issues long-term and control, we think it's a better solution, and especially when we look at the ability to keep the unit in perpetuity and affordability restriction. When we take what we think we've heard from you in prior, prior conversations, it seems like a better fit for 2016. I think the council was very smart in the late 1980s when they used this as inclusionary housing, because it created the market. The other thing that I will share also is that we think the model we're talking about is also replicable. We have three or four other homes under active review and investigation. Sandra and Andrea have alluded to, and one of the key elements of the program is owner-occupied. So we're doing a level of review. You'd also be surprised, or not, that some people are very creative at their falsification of documents and reports. So what we're having to do is a, a much higher level of scrutiny and review in order to find out. So with the council's help, we've taken a little more encouragement to be a little more aggressive on that. But we actually think this model, and the county, and, which I also had lunch today with the CEO, the county is interested in this, it is a replicable model, as does Napa Valley Community Housing. So it could be, and I'm not alluding to anything, because as we move through, we're very slow and deliberate in our reviews, and we're not going to pursue something that's not really very clear and obvious and legally set forward. But we do see this as potentially replicable over the next several years, if we were to have a notice of default on over so many units. So it is kind of a comparison. But really, it comes down to, you know, we do get more concerns about some of the affordable by property maintenance standards by the neighborhood.
Are there any questions from the council?
I have a question. If we go with the recommended option, what happens if Napa Valley Community Housing sells the property?
That's actually, is this on?
Yes.
I mean, what we would put in is covenants and deeds and restrictions, so that, you know, there obviously would need to be, you know, if they restructure or sell or merge, there needs to be some stuff like that to protect that. But it certainly, that's how we would put the structure in.
Great, thank you.
And I also, we got all excited, but there is a third option that staff absolutely is not enthusiastic with, which is, we own, rent, manage, and control it, and we simply are too lean a staff, and we do not have, and I will point out that even the fine folks in Napa that have a greater level of staff don't use that model either. There are people that are better situated to do that, that, that do that on a regular basis than we do. And, but that's an option, and if you tell us that you want us to do that, we will do that with more enthusiasm than I am presenting at this point in time.
Any other questions from council? Are there, I'll open the, the item for public comment. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Pam, one, one public? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to council for consideration.
I have a question.
Oh, surely.
Thank you. One of the, you alluded to the fact that there's three or four more coming up. And one of the issues that came up in our discussion was, are, for lack of a better term, how much money have we put out to purchase this property? Above and beyond what we will give back from selling it?
Nominal, because what we've been doing, I mean, we're in several thousand dollars, but really what we have is staff is doing a little more legwork on our own in terms of that. And the City of Napa Housing Authority, with our consent, is helping to do a few things. So what we're doing is, when we see something that just doesn't look right, we're doing something. So if you ever get a, if you ever hear that Sandra or I are spending too much time in a neighborhood, you might give an idea. We're just, we're looking at, we go by at different times to try to look at when somebody would be there, get a sense of what's there and what the activity. And then we're also, we're frankly doing a whole lot of research, because if it's your primary home, one shouldn't expect to find a whole lot of other homes under your legal ownership. So we've got some things, things like that that we're just taking to a higher level in terms of review, because it is a owner-occupied, not just an income program, but the requirement is that the inhabitant, even if it's inherited or whatnot, needs to be an owner-occupied. And that's our number one, that's our number, and I'm being told we've got to move quickly. So.
That's true. All right, very good. I mean, I'm, I agree with the fact that I think we should buy it. So I, I think there's a big fallacy of homeownership.
No, I'm sorry, we've already bought it.
No, that we would sell it. So, and they would release it out to rental. I mean, it's, it's, all you have to do is walk through town and see that rental serves this community very well. So, that's my comment.
All right. So we're actually looking for direction from you, and the recommendation is that you direct us to return with a resolution authorizing the town manager on behalf of the town to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Napa Valley Community Housing for 27 Landy Way. And along with that, it would accompany the regulatory agreement and other documents to ensure that the property is protected as affordable long-term.
All right. Councilmember Mollitt?
I'll make a motion to do what Sandra just said. Bring back the resolution, yada, yada, yada.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes, and then we'll move along to administrative 9B, Affordable Housing Local Preference Policy.
Good evening. So I've provided you with a copy of the town's approved Affordable Housing Local Preference Policy, and that's contained in Resolution 238705. And it applies to both ownership and rental opportunities within the town, and creates a three-tiered priority system in which units are awarded based on a lottery. First priority is given to eligible households that both live and work in the town, while the second priority is given to households that either live or work in the town, with the third priority being all other households. We have started a dialogue, or town staff has started a dialogue with the Napa Housing Authority about amending this policy to create additional priority categories to emphasize workforce housing. And we believe that there may be some amendments to this program that might work to get the units into the hands of those workforce housing occupants. And so with this in mind, we've presented a draft tier of five categories, in which the first priority is to eligible households with a member who is an emergency responder, a teacher, or an employee of the town of Yountville. And this category is based on the importance of having emergency responders live in the community in which they serve. And given commute distances and road blockages that can occur in times of emergency, it puts those people in our communities. The second priority would be to households with a member that works in the town of Yountville. And this category is intended to give greater preference to the workforce. While it's definitely mentioned in our existing tiers by tying it to living in Yountville, it takes the preference away from that. The third priority household would be for a member that lives in the town of Yountville. And then we've created two new categories that would be for a member that works in the county or lives in the county. And this is in response to demographic data that shows that the majority of workers in each of the Napa County municipalities reside in the county, although they may not live in the community in which they work. And then the last category is essentially to apply to everyone else. And if we are to stick with the lottery program, this would give a greater chance to those in the higher categories of actually, of winning the lottery and living in town. And I would just note that local preference policies are valid if they don't intentionally discriminate against any group that's protected by fair housing laws, or if they don't have a disparate impact on a group that's protected by fair housing laws. And so if you give us direction to revise the policy, we'll work in close connection with the town attorney to make sure that we don't violate that, those laws. So our recommendation is that you direct staff to return with a resolution amending the policy with this goal of addressing workforce housing.
Thank you. Does anyone on council have a question of staff? Sorry.
This might be too early, maybe goes to the town attorney. How would you define second priority be given to a member that works in the town of Yountville? Would that be somebody who has a full-time job at one of our businesses, or could it be as loose as somebody who earns 25% of their income doing yard work in Yountville?
Well, I think the current policy has written because it's not defined, it would be part-time or full-time, and the policy could be refined, specify a certain number of hours, full-time work, part-time work.
Okay, so just, any kind of work may?
I think the way this is currently written, it would be.
Okay, so.
It's defined in the current agreement as to a preference for your, your primary position, spending at least 50% of your working time here in town. So we do try to define it to avoid the occasional worker here to get that, that type of preference.
Okay.
And I do think it's also important that we noted the combination of live and works in Yountville was heavily weighted, but that the vast majority of the employees don't meet those criteria. So we were finding that that was a very small number. And while it may made sense in the 90s when you were talking about homeownership, it really doesn't work for the rental market now in today's environment, because part of the goal is also to, to get these folks out of the longer commutes from, you know, coming up from Napa, Vallejo, Bacaville, Fairfield that they may be commuting in, and to get them into housing in proximity to where they're working. So we found that that just was an outdated model.
Any further questions from the council?
Would you like a motion?
Well, I was going to ask for public comment on this issue. If there is any public comment. Seeing none?
And I have one other question for staff, please.
Okay.
The 2015 housing element, section 4.6, and it's one of our laundry lists, says, "Give priority for new affordable housing units to current town residents and employees." Does this buy elevating emergency responders who don't necessarily work here, or a teacher who doesn't necessarily work here? How does all that fit together?
We need a little tightening of the concept, because it should probably be a Yountville elementary school teacher. There's some nuances that we will work with. We just wanted to gain some understanding of, if you were willing to look at a receptiveness. We've heard that teachers can't afford to live. We know a lot of our own public works, first emergency responders can't afford to live in the community. So we, we need a little tightening on the definitions, and we'll have all of that. This was more conceptual for you tonight.
Thank you. So do we have a resolution to direct staff to return with a resolution amending the town's local preference policy?
My direction would be to tighten it up a lot. I mean, six seems so inclusion, I mean, we're, sorry, I'm going into comment again, but six is so, we've covered everyone. We don't need it, because we've just allowed everyone. So my, my comment is to come back with a little tighter.
Your feedback will help us. We will, we'll streamline it.
Very good.
But you generally, I guess the question is, do you generally support what we're attempting to do?
We'll.
That it is identifying certain segments to give them higher priority.
So do we need a motion?
Okay, sure, yep.
We're getting directions. We have a motion by?
By acclamation?
To tighten it up. Who's going to second that?
I'll second it.
Very good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will ask for staff informational reports?
We're done.
Okay. Then I would like a motion to adjourn this special meeting of the Yountville Housing Authority.
So moved.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.